Agency Governing Board, I'll ask the clerk to take role please.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, item two on this agenda today is approving the partial payment to the Central Iowa Shelter and Services, C I S S, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to approve future payments. This one is for $2,248,373.10. Board Communication Number 12-139. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this suggestion? Please.
Good afternoon. On behalf of Central Iowa Shelter and Services, I just wanted to thank this board for their support of this project. You know, we are nearing, I guess we are very much under construction, the building's up, and if anybody wants to come by and take a tour, you're more than welcome. The units are coming along, and we hope to be finished in September so we can start housing people in those apartments, hopefully by the first of October, even though the emergency part of the shelter opened sometime in September. So, thank you.
Christine?
Tony, I'd just like to add, and for the benefit of everybody here at the council table as well, because we've had discussions about this, and for the public also, when we did the check presentation last week, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, for $500,000 from Federal Home Loan Bank, it's my understanding that there's about $650,000, $700,000 left to be raised to meet the goal, which included the endowment that would help provide support for ongoing operating. What is obvious is the fact that the surrounding communities have not participated. And so what we have arranged through the Metro Advisory Council is that there be a Metro Advisory Council meeting in June, and we'll actually have the meeting at the shelter so that they can tour the facility before it's finished, but we're also working to develop some different scenarios based upon a per capita basis. And the good thing is, some of the board members who actually reside in surrounding communities want to be there to participate and encourage their elected officials to support this. And so that is moving forward, it's scheduled for June, and I think it'll be a wonderful opportunity for all of the metro area to participate.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the action. Congratulations, Tony. The place looks fantastic.
Thanks.
Christine?
Seven yes?
Right, that's the only action on our agenda this evening. Could we have a motion to adjourn? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, we sit adjourn. Let's immediately welcome everybody to the Des Moines City Council meeting. And before we start, we're going to, today, have a word from our own council member, Hallie Grease, and we'd ask those who are going to participate in this to stand at this time, and we'll start the council meeting right after.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, we just thank you for today. God, we thank you that you're a good God, that you're loving, that you're gracious. We just pray for humility in our decision-making this evening. God, we pray that you would give us wisdom as we deliberate the issues before you. God, we thank you and we praise you. In your name, amen.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended. There has been a request to move forward, item 47, which is an intergovernmental 2080 agreement with Polk County for assistance in the collection of delinquent city Des Moines parking citations. And Mary Maloney is going to be here, I see her sitting right here, and she has another meeting, so I'd ask that that be moved forward to right after the consent agenda, if that's okay with everybody. Other than that, could we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended?
Seven yes?
All right, item three is approving the consent agenda. That, this evening, is items three through 34. And, is there a consent? The consent items, item 4M, Councilmember Mahaffey wishes to speak. Item five, Councilmember Moore, and I vote no. And item nine, councilmembers Hensley and Coleman have asked to speak. Are there any other items, again, these are items three through 34, that anyone would have asked to be moved for further discussion or clarification? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the ballot?
Move.
All right, that takes us to item 4M. Item four is approving the alcoholic beverage license applications for the following, and M is the Fast Mart at 1401 Buchanan Street, and that's an E liquor license. Councilmember Mahaffey.
Yes, that is previously known as the Oasis, and I don't understand what the reason is for them to change their name, but I think that, you know, you can change the spots on the cow, but still the same cow you have there. So, I would think the operations of, may not change. We'd like to delay this granting of the license and see if they can't work with our police department for a written understanding as how they're going to operate, and to see that we can't maintain the safety up there for the students around East High and the ones who frequent that area. So, I'm asking for us to delay this till the next council meeting.
We have a motion. I would ask the city attorney, please make comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify for the council, Fast Mart is not timely filed, so if council doesn't renew it tonight, they wouldn't be able to sell after April 7th. So, if the motion is to delay it, but allow them to continue to sell alcohol, council should include in the motion to treat it as timely filed so that the sales can continue during the period of delay while this is being worked on.
I'm not sure I want to, I'd like to just eliminate them selling it. I don't really, I'm not bothered by that. So, Bob, if you'd like, I would love to see us not allow them to sell it, until they sit down, have to go through the process, and work with the police chief and the police department.
I will go along with that, because I don't think we've had the most cooperation.
We haven't.
And, again, just to advise council, certainly you could do what you choose. That would likely result in appeal to the state, and then the state can grant them the right to continue to sell.
I'm supportive of this concept, I was, but could they file that appeal and have it approved by April 7th?
Not necessarily, but they can certainly.
So, our grounds would be, it wasn't properly filed, we could deny it today and let them reapply another time.
Well, it has been filed now. Council, oftentimes, as I understand it, the procedure has been, if it's filed more than 30 days prior to expiration of the license, then council will treat it as timely filed and allow them to continue to sell while any adjustments are being made or while things are being evaluated. In this particular case, as I understand it, the license holder was going to, attempting to sell the business and thought it was going to sell. Someone else apparently had initially applied, and then had determined that they weren't going to be able to meet the statutory division for sales and decided not to purchase the business. So, that's the, that's why it's in the position that it's in.
Legally, then, we have the basis to deny at this point.
For lack of time, why are you filing?
Well, it was, it wasn't filed, that's a council policy, as opposed to a statutory requirement. They were filed prior to the expiration of their license, so I don't know that that would be the basis for denial. If you want to deny it based on something else, then we can review that. The problem is, the next council meeting is not going to be until April 9th, which would be after their period.
Okay, so our action tonight would make their filing untimely?
Would treat their filing as untimely, yes.
Treat it as untimely?
Would treat it as untimely, because it wasn't filed more than 30 days prior to the expiration.
To our policy of 30 days.
Correct.
If we moved it to the 9th, but based upon how it is now, it is timely filed?
Council can treat it, it's timely filed in terms of being able to be acted upon tonight. That's what's, so it would be legitimate for council to go ahead and treat it as being timely filed to act on it tonight. If you, given council's policy, if you decide not to act on it tonight, then effective on the 7th, they would no longer be allowed, unless the state would intervene, they would no longer be allowed to sell alcohol.
But I think that the difference here is, the route that Bob was going to go, Councilmember Mahaffey was going to go, was to delay action on it to allow them to work with the police chief. And if that's the case, then they're able to continue selling liquor, alcohol.
Not after the 7th.
Not after the 7th, okay.
Unless council deems to treat them as being timely filed, then they can continue to sell alcohol until there's a basis for.
What leverage do we have if we grant that and they just continue to sell then?
Well, because you won't have actually renewed the license. So, at some other point in time, if you determine that there is a statutory violation for which it's proper to deny the renewal, then council, at that point in time when the renewal is taken up again, can decide not to renew the license.
Mr. Lester, can I, my goal is that on the 7th, they have to stop selling alcohol until the 9th. Under Councilman Mahaffey's motion, would they have to stop on the 7th?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm supportive of your motion.
Okay. We'll maintain that motion, then.
Okay.
To clear that up, if they can't sell after the 7th, they can't sell on the 9th either, can they?
Can't sell on the 8th, can't sell on the 9th, correct.
Correct.
So, they're done until they come back.
Until, until either the state would intervene or until the council renews the license.
And I think that gives us more leverage for them to work with the police department.
Sure does.
Okay, takes us to item nine, which is approving a professional service agreement with RDG, planning and design for the design and construction phase service of the Principal Park locker rooms, not to exceed $161,000. Council Communication Number 12-133. Councilmembers Hensley and Coleman have asked to speak on this, which, who wants to start?
Go ahead.
This is a project I'm very supportive of. I think opening day is April 5th, just a week or so away. Having the Iowa Cubs here is enormously beneficial to the vibrancy of our community, and I think our brand, you know, we're one of the smallest AAA markets with the highest attendance rates. It's really good for us. And I do know that the ability to keep the Cubs here relies on the Chicago management feeling good about their player development here. And so, you know, they've had this master plan of fixing up Principal Park that includes this and a number of other things. We did the field five or six years ago, and, so I'm supportive of this. I also would like to, just to ask, maybe that the council, as part of a motion to approve this, refer back to the city manager, to the mayor, and to each of us in our own ways of working on this, to engage the Iowa Cubs and our regional partners in how we fund the future of Principal Park. It's this locker room and a number of other improvements that are necessary. If you go back 20 years ago, when we redid Principal Park, at the time it was Sec Taylor, the suburban communities took a big chunk of the debt and paid that off. It was $750,000. By the time we paid interest, it was over 1.4 million. Some communities made annual payments as low as $3,000, others as much as $150,000. And those all got paid off in the last year. Well, the life of the facility as we redid it is at the point where we need to do some improvements. And it makes sense to me that we try and do our best to encourage this, continue to be one of those, we're all in it together. I'm not quite sure there's too many examples, as good as Principal Park, where we show our regional cooperation. Not only do people support it from all over the region, season ticket holders, companies that have boxes, all that kind of stuff, but it's also been funded as a region. And I hope we can compel our regional partners to join us in the next generation of Principal Park, this project and future ones, to kind of join us to be a part of that. Manager, I don't know if you have any comments on that. I know you dug up some information for me on exactly when those agreements expired, but it sure makes sense that out of their budget, they have money that's being freed up, where they have been used to paying for part of this debt, and it makes sense to ask them to pay something in the future, or to consider it.
Mr. Coleman, councilmembers, Principal Park is a jewel in our crown, but it is a jewel that really benefits the entire central Iowa area, the metropolitan area. The benefits accrue far beyond the limits of the city of Des Moines. That said, it is also true that the lion's share of the costs, the capital costs, have fallen to Des Moines taxpayers over the year. When the current facility was upgraded about 15 years ago, the city issued bonds, they were retired with hotel motel funds to really pay for virtually all of the improvements there. There was a piece of it, however, $750,000 of debt that was retired by our friends in the suburbs. And it seems to me that as we go forward with now looking at the need to maintain that facility further, beyond what we're talking about this evening, quite frankly, that it's worth a discussion, I think, Mr. Coleman, as you said it, to look at other ways that those improvements can be funded by sources beyond the taxpayers of Des Moines. It just seems to me to be a good time for us to raise that question. I think there are a number of different ways to approach that. I can't tell you right now what the very best way to do it is. I just think that discussion needs to take place, particularly because we're in such constant struggles for money, that this is a very good time for us to seek out other sources, creative sources of funding, that can help pay for improvements to what is, for all practical purposes, a regional facility.
If I can just add to, and I didn't realize Chris was going to pull this off, that we're on the same page, we're just looking at it a little bit differently, I believe. What I'd like to do is, you have those meetings, and you and I've talked about this, is look at the model that's used by the Civic Center, where they actually have a surcharge of $2.50 per ticket that is restricted for capital improvements. And that way, everybody that uses the facility, it doesn't matter where they're living from, they're actually contributing to that. And I can't remember the dollar amounts for the Civic Center, but it's pretty significant, and they use that to do a lot of their improvements. So, I'd like to have us consider that. That's a more equitable way of spreading the cost. I don't know how the baseball group is going to respond to that, but we have a model that's been very successful with another entertainment venue that I think they could sit down and talk with them. I think what they bring to the community is absolutely outstanding, and I want to work with them to make sure that we continue to keep it at the level that we need to be successful. So, I will move item nine.
And so, essentially, is that to then refer to the city manager to see if we can't at least open the discussion?
Look at additional funding options, yes, and discussions with the appropriate players, yes.
Yeah, it'd be great, I think, to engage the regional city managers in this discussion and move forward. I know Jim Nahas, Iowa Cubs general manager, is here. Anything you want to add?
Hi, Jim Nahas, Muti Iowa Cubs, One Line Drive. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having me here. We just, we love our partnership, and anything that you guys suggest, we're more than willing to work with. You know, we've had a facility that was upgraded in 1994, and our clubhouses, though, have been there since 1983. So, it's one of the things that no one gets to see when they come to the ballpark, that really are to the point now where the Chicago Cubs are pushing us to upgrade it and everything. And everything you guys are doing are spectacular. So, Councilwoman Hensley, anything you want to do, we're willing to sit down and talk to you and work with you guys, because we have a great partnership, and we'd like to continue it for a long time.
Great, thanks very much.
Thanks, Jim. All right.
Seven yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda. As to our amended order, we're going to quickly move to item 47, which is an intergovernmental 2080 agreement with Polk County for assistance in the collection of delinquent city of Des Moines parking citations. Council Communication Number 12-138. And I think we have a young woman here in the audience who might want to at least make, at least a opening comment on it. We appreciate you being here, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for calling me young. Mary Maloney, Polk County Treasurer. This 2080 agreement would involve the Polk County Treasurer's Office collecting delinquent parking tickets that are certified to us through the city of Des Moines. The DOT would be involved in putting it on the computer system, and there would be stops put on people's registration until those parking tickets are paid. We, in the last few years, have started doing collections for the Clerk of Court's Office and the Department of Revenue, and they have found it to be a useful collection method. So, we've been talking about this for a few, a few years, when they made legislation to enable it. There are few cities in Iowa that have started doing it with some success, and we're happy to have a partnership with the city of Des Moines. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it'll be a great vehicle to make that happen. Any comments?
I was just going to say that I think this is a kind of a headline for the partnership cooperation that we've been talking about since Skip and I joined the council. So, I think this is, this is great, and excited to see it move forward.
You're moving it?
I would be happy to, unless Diane wants to move it.
Let's ask the manager to make a comment.
It'll take, I'll do this in five seconds. I did want to acknowledge great work on the part of Diane Rower, city clerk, who really, I think, along with Mary Maloney, has kept this thing going, and has taken a lot of work, but it got it here, a lot of perseverance, and I really do appreciate Diane's work within our organization to make this thing happen. So, good work.
Thank you both.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us back to item 35. Item 35 is the first consideration of ordinance, which is amending chapter 34 of the municipal code regarding reductions of the allocation deposited into the cemetery perpetual maintenance fund from 30% to 20%. Council Communication Number 12-137, A is the final consideration of the ordinance above waivers requested by the Park and Recreation Department and requires six votes. And B is an amendment to the schedule of fees. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
I'll move 35, 35 A and B.
All right. Item 35I is a council request. It's from myself and Councilmember Hensley for a quick discussion regarding the options for Class E liquor licenses. Mrs. Hensley, why don't you go ahead and open it up?
Okay. As we all know, we've had legislative, we were working through the legislature to try and make a change to the Class E liquor license, and we've not been successful for a variety of reasons. So, our alternative would be then to look internally, or at the city, and what action could we take from a city perspective in the interim. Doesn't mean that we're going to give up on it at the state level, but we want to make sure that we've done everything from a city perspective that we can possibly do. In talking with city legal staff, it's my understanding that we would have the ability to look at some zoning-related issues, and what I would, another option obviously would be the moratorium that we've had discussion about. But due to the fact that we don't see any in the pipeline at this point, I'm not sure that we want to go the moratorium route, because I don't want to abuse that. But if we could look at zoning and determine from a zoning perspective, how could we have more input into where and how many would be located within a specific geographic area? And so, my motion would be to refer it back to city manager's office, legal, to work, look at that, and to have to go through the appropriate committees, P and Z, and come back to us. And I would hope that that could be done relatively quick, on the fast track, to make sure that we get that in place as quickly as possible. Because as we know, and I know, Jeff, you provided some information at the MAC meeting, and I don't know if you can remember that off the top of your head, but there is quite a telling story when you look at the percentage of liquor licenses, Class E liquor licenses that have been awarded within the city of Des Moines compared to the total number within the state. Do you happen to remember those numbers?
I don't actually, Councilmember Hensley, I don't remember them off the top of my head. I do know that there's been a dramatic increase since the state went to allowing Class E liquor licenses to be sold at gasoline establishments, I believe around 33% statewide, and it's almost 40% in Des Moines, increases in the Class E liquor licenses since those establishments became eligible. So, I don't have the dollar figures that I had at that particular meeting, but I believe it's around 38.5% for the city of Des Moines and 33% for the state in terms of increased number of licenses. It's nearly a $3 million windfall to the state in terms of increased revenue. There's no real corresponding increased revenue for the city, but as we all know, there are dramatically increased direct and indirect costs to the city and extreme taxation of the city's resources in participating with and in dealing with this particular legislative enactment.
All right, we have a motion.
Mayor, is that, does that complete the discussion on that item?
Yep.
Can I, can I bring up a related topic to it?
Sure.
Christine and I, and others, circled around to some of the companies that do have Class E liquor license to share our ideas for legislation. And one of the things that we heard back from people is their advice that the city should be looking at a multifaceted way to address these long-term. And I wanted to just voice for you and for people listening some of the things that we heard, because I'd love to work with some council members in planning and zoning to talk a little bit about this. Their concern is that as the city has increased regulations and restrictions for the site plan, for what is necessary to rebuild and reinvest in our neighborhoods, it's become more burdensome. A couple years ago, we increased the requirements quite a bit, green space, how much space around it, the limited number of dispensing. much space around it, the limited number of dispensing pumps, canopy size. On top of that, a PUD has to be two acres in our community. So while we encourage PUDs a lot, and it's been a pretty successful vehicle, for instance, at East, Southeast 14th and Deal, and at 61st and Douglas in Des Moines, that's a come-and-go on the southeast side, Casey's out here. You know, one of the things the neighbors said was, well, they're taking all this property, and the reason they do is in order to meet the requirement for a PUD, they have to take a house down or take more area to get to the two-acre minimum. What, what they told us, I think pretty directly, is what you've done is you've put us in a position of having to sell our old sites and look for new property to develop. We abandoned a facility that has grandfathered rights, that can open up a gas station, that can, you know, often qualify for a liquor license, now a Class E liquor license, and we're replacing some pretty reputable operators with, with others that have not been so reputable. We talked about the Oasis here tonight. There's many others scattered around the community that are filling up, especially with this Class E liquor license, to kind of open themselves up as a convenience store or a gas station at abandoned locations. I say all that because I think their pitch to us has some merit, and I think we ought to be real careful about, you know, what we do. They used as an example the come-and-go at East Guthrie and I-235. That replaced a pretty shabby old place. But they said, you know what, if we wanted to build that today, it doesn't meet city regulations in all kinds of ways. And they think the city's better off with that property there redeveloped than them abandoning it, leaving it for a, you know, a third-rate operator to come in and, you know, be a negative influence on the neighborhood and the kids that live there. And, and I think there's some merit to that. How we get from today to reviewing some of those things that we did a couple of years ago, I'm not right, really sure I have the answers, and I'm not advocating any particular response, but I do think it's worth talking about to make sure that we don't have this continual cycle of, you know, the life of a convenience store is eight or 10 years, they're going to abandon it and leave it to somebody that's going to take it over simply because it has grandfathering rights. They gave me one other example, and I'll tell you, that if they sell a building that they don't put a covenant restriction on, it will bring more than twice the value if they can walk in and have a liquor license there right then. If they sell it where they can't have gas or can't have liquor, then it cuts the price, their value, in half. And so they have, they have a business interest. They're in money, they have investors, that's what they're in business for, to sell it to the next person that can sell liquor and gas. And I'm not quite sure that's the best thing for our neighborhoods. So I, I think we ought to take a look at what those restrictions are. I told you I'm not advocating any, but I, I think maybe the minimum size of a PUD might be interesting. It still creates all the, you know, public input and negotiating, but I never served on P and Z. I just would like to see us get to a day that's better for some of our neighborhoods that are being ravaged by these second-rate, third-rate convenience stores that, in my opinion, are selling things that are not good for the kids and people that live in those neighborhoods.
Mr. Coleman, I think that I agree with you, and Bob and I worked on a number of these things. We did serve, as Brian did, on P and Z and did for quite a long period of time. One of the frustrations that I have since I've been on this council is we have not rewritten the zoning code to match our 2020 plan, and now we're about ready, we probably need to rewrite the 2020 plan here pretty soon. It's been over 10 years since we wrote that one, and we haven't been able to update the codes to match the, the plan. And I think some of these issues certainly need to be addressed, but at the long run and the long view, I think all of us are hoping to improve the quality of development within the City of Des Moines. And, you know, all these issues need to be brought to the table, and we need to finish some of the broader base issues and, and I hope not just deal with all these things as they come one at a time in a reactive kind of way, but more proactive and get, get to rewriting that, that code. It's been long overdue, it's been over a decade since the 2020 plan was written, and we still haven't done that. So I would certainly push that we go ahead and do that, but let's deal with some of these issues specifically. It seemed to be a problem moving forward. I didn't particularly want to speak on this issue because I could talk about it for 10 years, which is how long I've been thinking about it. So I don't think we're looking for a motion, but let's hope that we can move this forward here pretty quickly, and we'll ask the manager to get community development, Legal, and everybody together, and let's figure out.
I'd love to be a part of that kind of discussion, get that jump started again.
That would take us to, looks like public hearings. So hearings, we'll open the hearing at 5:08. And item 38 is on the appeal from Cornelius Qualley of 2820 School Street of the Administrative Hearing Officer's Decision on an Impounded Vehicle. It's Cornelius here. From the podium, please, sir. This is a hearing. We will ask quickly, the city attorney will tell, tell us what can be presented here and what we're going to deal with in terms of this appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The appeal is an appeal from a decision by the administrative hearing officer. Counsel's role is not to receive any new facts or evidence. They can take whatever is in the record and review that entirely and act upon what's in the record. Any argument can be made regarding the facts that are in the record, but the counsel standard of review is to determine whether or not the hearing, hearing officer's decision was supported by sufficient evidence such that probable cause existed for the impound of the vehicle. That's the, the role, not to determine whether it was fair or a good idea or something else, but whether or not there was, in fact, probable cause, given the facts and circumstances that are in the record.
All right, sir.
Yes, I will just give a short summation of the facts so everyone's informed as a...
For the record, could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Cornelius Qualley, 2820 School Street, Des Moines, Iowa.
Thank you.
And the situation at hand here is on January 13, 2012, my vehicle was towed from the 300 block of 7th Street, and it was, I exited my building after work, noticed my vehicle was missing, there was still time on the meter, and I contacted the City of Des Moines to determine what happened to my vehicle, and was informed that it was impounded due to past due tickets and habitual violator status. I then went and basically paid those tickets and released the vehicle from impound. Now, the situation at hand here is that prior on December 21, 2011, my vehicle was also towed from approximately the same location, and at this time, when I went to pay the tickets, I was informed that I needed to go to the police station and pay those tickets, is what I did to receive my vehicle release. I went there, paid the tickets. The officer asked me at that time, would I like to pay past due tickets only, or do I like to pay all of my tickets? I informed the officer that I would like to pay all of my tickets, so that is what I did. I provided with payment, and I received a receipt indicating that all tickets had been paid, and it listed all the tickets on the receipt, which is in the record. When I contacted the city clerk's office after my second towing instance, I noticed that my vehicle was towed for four of the same tickets which were listed as paid on my previous receipt, which I received from the police officer on December 21, 2011. Now, as I presented to the hearing officer originally, my issue here is, obviously, as I'm sure most of you know, procedural due process provides that I receive a notice and a fair hearing when there's deprivation of property. Now, my issue here is that I did not receive adequate notice before my vehicle was towed. I had no notice that my vehicle could be towed at the time it was towed. I was informed that all tickets had been paid at the time my vehicle was towed on the second instance, and I received no additional notice, and I received no additional tickets between those two time spans. Now, the issue at hand is, I also received a tow notice, however, that tow notice was sent out the day that my vehicle was towed, which, obviously, with US Mail could not be received until one or two days after my vehicle was towed on the second instance. So between my first vehicle being towed, being towed, and my paying all tickets outstanding and receiving an invoice stating that all tickets had been paid, my vehicle was towed again without any further notice whatsoever. Now, regarding the appeal, I obviously presented these facts to the hearing officer, and there was a couple inaccuracies, or I believe some misconceptions regarding the law as to, as to her decision. First and foremost, she indicated in the hearing and in her appeal that my vehicle could be and was, in part, towed because I had expired license plates on my vehicle. I informed her at the hearing that I was under the assumption, and as far as my interpretation of the code, that was not correct, and a vehicle cannot be towed merely because plates were, were expired. And that is supported by Section 114, 361.08B, that a vehicle can receive a $15 fine but cannot be towed unless it's habitual violator status. I informed her of that. She asked me to recite the code. I told her that that was her burden to prove at that point and that a vehicle cannot be towed for that. However, she did base part of her decision clearly on that fact, that my vehicle was merely had expired license plates. Second of all, she, on a number of occasions, indicated, seemed to base her opinion heavily on the fact that I had prior tickets, which, as the code states, is outside of the scope of what the hearing officer is entitled to make her decision on. She has a very limited scope as to how to make her decision, and it's not whether I had my propensity for receiving parking tickets. And besides that fact, that was completely irrelevant in this case. I was merely arguing not whether I received the tickets or whether they were valid since I had paid them, but merely whether I had received notice that my vehicle could be towed. So the fact that I had prior tickets, which she mentioned on numerous occasions, both at the hearing and in her decision, seemed to have no bearing whatsoever on this case, but seemed to have a great deal of impact on her decision. And finally, it seemed like overall, hearing officer seemed to have a misconception of what my argument was. I was merely stating that whether or not the tickets were valid is irrelevant. The fact is, I didn't receive tickets, I didn't receive notice that I could be towed. It's not whether I received the tickets or whether the amount that I paid added up to the total amount that the tickets were due, but merely whether or not I had any notice that my vehicle could be towed. Now, my main issue here is, had the tow notice been sent a day or two after it did, or had they held off, or I'm sorry, a day or two prior to when it did, so I would have received it prior to my vehicle being towed? That's it.
Can he finish that last?
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, my, my basic issue is, had that, had the tow notice been sent a day or two prior, so I would have had receipt of it, I could have, at the very least, not parked on the city street, rectified the situation, made sure all the tickets were taken care of as they should have been, and this issue would have never came up. However, the tow notice was sent on the same day my vehicle was towed, I had no way, no opportunity to determine whether my vehicle would be towed or not. I mean, like I said, I received the day after in the US Mail, and as you can see from the record, it is dated the same day I was towed. So, I mean, there is no way for me to have notice. I received, I justifiably relied on what the officer told me and what the officer provided me, that the tickets had been paid, and received no further notice after that point.
Any questions anybody might have?
What, what specifically are you asking for?
The, what the code provides, that, that impound fee and all associated tow costs be refunded.
And what does that total?
And what is that helping?
I will, give me one second. The total amount that I show is 191.28 with the duplicate tickets, the habitual violator ticket, the City of Des Moines impound fee, the GNS service towing fee, and...
No, just a towing fee.
But you're not asking for all that back?
I'm asking, the code provides for all related expenses, which would be the towing fee, the impound fee, and the ticket associated with my vehicle being towed at that point.
I don't want the tickets because you've got an issue with tickets.
Sure, then the, the towing fee and the City of Des Moines impound fee, $20, 56... The GNS service towing fee is 56.18, the City of Des Moines impound fee is $20, and the habitual violator ticket, which is solely related to this vehicle being towed, is $30.
Shouldn't the GNS bill be 20?
I wish.
To get us off on a tangent.
I guess I would just direct a question to Legal and ask if Mr. Qualley's reading of the code is accurate.
No, I don't believe so. There, there are a number of issues that I think the council should take in, into account here. Again, it's whether or not there was probable cause to tow, and that's what the standard is, and, and whether the hearing officer was abused her discretion in finding probable cause. The reality of the situation is that there's no requirement that he be served with a personalized tow notice. He has notice as soon as he operates his vehicle in the City of Des Moines, that he's got to comply with city ordinances, just like everybody else. Section 114, 4511 says that for any stopping or parking in violation of this chapter, the car can be towed, can be impounded. He's admitted, and it was found by the hearing officer, that he didn't have an appropriate tag. The fact that there's a $15 penalty for not having an appropriate tag and having the vehicle on the street doesn't mean that that is the sole and exclusive thing that could ever happen. If that was the case, you could never get to a habitual violator status, for example. The, the reality is that he, he had the, a vehicle that was parked in violation of the chapter, in violation of city ordinance, and so it's permissible to tow it under that section. To the extent that he, he comes to you and, and claims detrimental reliance or estoppel or whatever equitable claim that he's asserting, I would just remind the council that in order to claim an equitable claim, in order to assert something in equity, which is fairness, he's got to have clean hands. He can't have some kind of complicity in the event. Counsel should look, then, at the, the fact that this is a person who had multiple parking tickets, didn't pay the parking tickets until the vehicles were towed. He's charged, he has notice of, on each of those parking tickets, what the value is. He can't go into the, the PD and, and then come back later and claim to you, well, gee, he thought he paid it all, when the, the numbers didn't add up. He has a responsibility to do the math and make, make sure that he's paid for each of the individual tickets, and the numbers don't add up, and that's what the, the hearing officer found in, in her decision. So I think in, in terms of deliberations, those are the kinds of things that, that the council should, should look at.
There's no, there's no dispute that he had expired tickets.
I'm sorry?
There's no dispute, then, that he had expired ticket.
That, that's what the hearing...
Or expired plates.
Right, that's what the hearing officer found.
Did he have outstanding tickets?
Pardon?
Did he have outstanding tickets, or had all his tickets been paid at the prior?
No, as you, as you look through there, there was a, the, the way that he's given his summary, his summation, was that he had asked whether or not he had paid all of his tickets, and that was apparently a dispute. The hearing officer found that there was a question as to whether or not he had asked if he paid all of his tickets, or whether or not he paid, he wanted to pay all of his outstanding tickets. And outstanding tickets would, would be tickets that were delinquent but had, but, but maybe were not yet, had reached delinquency stage. So he had paid the delinquent tickets, the tickets that were past due in terms of payment, but he had not paid all of the tickets, apparently.
Well, I, and here's, section, when I read section 114-361.8, that's reference that you have to have valid registration plate.
Correct.
If you're going to park on a city street, so that gave them the cause. I don't understand what the appeal's about. So the motion I'll have is to uphold the hearing officer's...
May I briefly respond or not?
Yeah.
There, it does actually appear in the code. If you notice, for the habitual violator status, it is exclusive, there are exclusive remedies listed, and it'll, it'll indicate another code section which allows a vehicle to be towed. So merely because there's any, I mean, basically, that, that logic would state that any violation whatsoever of any code statute would, would make your vehicle eligible to be towed. So basically, violating in any way whatsoever would allow your vehicle to be towed. But if you look at the habitual violator section, it gives an exclusive remedy and allows for your vehicle to be towed, that doesn't, that remedy is not available in your vehicle and your, your plates being expired. On a second instance, I just want to let the council know that I wasn't merely relying on... on the fact, on the verbal communications by the officer, but I received a receipt that specifically listed those four tickets that are an issue, and I received a receipt that listed those four tickets as well as the other tickets, and had a Des Moines Police Department paid stamp on it. That is in the file, and that's indicated. So, I relied both on that written receipt, and I feel that there's no reason for me to further investigate after I received confirmation verbally and on paper that stated that those tickets had been paid, that I should have to further investigate.
Before you respond, can I just make one more?
Sure.
But the reason, and the, the reason your car was towed, as I understand it, is because of the plates?
That's incorrect.
That's what the hearing officer found, that that was an alternative basis.
But that's...
Again, you're establishing probable cause, so it doesn't have to be exclusive.
That's why I'm confused. So, there's probable cause based solely on the plates?
There's probable cause based on two issues, the one that he keeps complaining about, and then also with respect...
Let me rephrase that. You could have found probable cause solely based on the plates?
Correct.
So, your argument's not in the alternative?
No, it's not an alternative. I disagree with that reading completely.
Okay, well, I think the next stop is, for you is District Court.
Correct.
So, I'll move, if, I'll move to uphold the hearing officer's...
I have to see it or...
Yeah, you'll see it, it'll come up.
No, I said, shall I be seated now?
Yeah.
All right. I think the, for you, Mr. Cornelius, or Ms. Qualley, as Councilmember Meyer indicated, your next up would be District Court. All right. Item 39 on the appeal of Hamad G. Coco Ahmed of 3800 Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway regarding recommended denial of a taxicab license.
My name is Hamad Coco. Oh, Hamad, I'm here for appeal for what they call a taxicab license.
Okay.
I'm here because I have denied to have a kind of license or permit. The problem is because I have found that my criminal background cannot allow me to have a license. So, and I came to explain why am I here, why I couldn't have, and for how long am I going to be to stay without having kind of work here in Iowa? So, because I've been kind of from 2008. I never were because policemen kind of put me in jail, and they told me that, I mean, I'm being kind of contacted, disowned contact. So, that turned me to have a kind of be in jail, or to play guilty, which the thing I didn't do is, but I did. So, I mean, I play guilty and become a true. So, the second thing also, there is, since 2004, the year I just came from, so I have a charge with eluding, and I just have been kind of two months in this country, and I get charged with eluding. Until now, it's in my record, I can't have a job, because everywhere I go to find a job, they're telling me, you have eluding, and you have misdemeanor, you can't work and count like that. So, that's why I came over here. Also, when I came over to find how to get the way to get the license so that I can drive the taxi, they also say I have a bug, my bug on is bad. So, that's why I'm here. I came over here to find out how can I, for how long am I going to stay like this? And how can I can survive like this? Because I ran out four years.
What are the circumstances surrounding the arrest for eluding?
I'm sorry?
What happened? Why were you arrested for eluding?
Because I was driving, that was November, I came here kind of July 13, 2004, and I found the job kind of on August 28, at DZ. So, while I was driving, I was trying to drive, and I didn't know how to drive good. I just had to kind of two months. So, while I was driving to DZ, and police was following me, I didn't even know the rule, so whether, what they call, yellow light, and then until they come and catch me, and they put me kind of eluding a person. So, I went to jail, and I got charged with eluding. And then the second one?
And what year was that again?
That was 2004.
And what was the circumstances surrounding the arrest for assault and disorderly conduct?
Okay. Also, that one was, I was in my house, and then the two people came, Lily and a man, her brother, they came over, and they came and kind of throw their, threw their stone back through my apartment. So, when I came down to talk to them, they tried to fight with me. That's why they went back, and they called the police, and then when the police come also, police arrest me. And they say, I've been tried, that's disowned contact to them. They put me kind of a mis, also kind of mischief, and kind of what they call it. So, I also got the charge for this. And when I went, when they took me to jail, what they call, what they call court, of course, they told me, okay, instead of go to home, you have to play guilty. So, if you don't play guilty, you have to go home, you have to go back to jail. So, that's why also, I didn't even know the rule, because I know if I did, I'm going home. If I don't do it, I mean, they're going to put me in jail. So, also I play this kind of guilty, I mean, I also become true, that's my charge, which I believe in. So, that's why I'm here, I'm here to say about this.
So, I think in some place in the information here, you indicated that you would have a letter from one of the taxicab companies, that they are willing to hire you if you're successful in getting a license? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Can you share that letter with us?
United Taxicab Company to City Hall, that we will allow and provide service for Mr. Hamad to serve as a taxi driver. It's not signed. There's, and there's no letterhead?
No.
I'm sorry?
And there's no signature.
So, they were the ones, the United gave you this letter?
Yeah, he just gave me the, he said, just tell them, United Taxicab, which Habib and Omar Luther King by their quick trip. So, I told him to give me that. He said, just write down, and if there is any question, let them know, so you can let me know. I'll talk to them.
Well, I was willing to go the route that we've typically gone with other individuals to put it on a probationary period, but I would not do that until we had confirmation from United that they have actually agreed, because this letter does not make me feel comfortable.
So, what we would probably need is, on their company letterhead with Mr. Habib's signature?
Signature.
Over the request, and to date it?
Okay.
And a phone number, so if our staff could then follow up and see, and just confirm that. So, it sounds like the motion is to...
Issue, well, I would do...
No, no, I think we probably ought to...
Pardon?
Continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing until next time, when hopefully you can bring it back.
Okay.
And so, if that is the motion, and it passes, then nothing will happen this evening. It's on you to produce those pieces and bring them back as proof of this. Now, I don't doubt that he might have given you that, but tell him it needs to be much more official and substantial than that.
Besides this signature, is there anything that you need from him, so I can let him know also?
Letterhead, if he's got one, and his signature, and it's got to be dated.
Okay. Oh, well.
And contact information?
Okay.
For Mr. Habib.
And so, you'll come back then, two weeks from now, which would be April 9?
Is that what it is?
April 9?
Isn't it April 9th?
Okay.
Yes.
April 9.
Okay.
I guess to no.
All right, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
We'll have to tag this all.
You can have that one, yes, you can take that.
All right, let's move on to item 40, which is an assessment of penalties for violation of the Iowa alcohol beverage laws to the following. A is Azia Inc. doing business as Des Moines Food and Liquor at 5,000 Southwest 9th. There's a $500 penalty on that. B is Dan Lee Corporation doing business as Phillips 66 Jiffy at 3718 Southwest 9th Street for $1,500, and a 30-day suspension of the license. Anyone here to speak on that? Items 40A and B. Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move 40A and B.
Item 41, on a request from Arnold DeWitt to rezone 1241 East 38th Street from R160, one-family low-density residential to limited C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow for the expansion of existing mini warehouse complexes subject to conditions. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Anyone here to speak on this item?
If not, I've got a couple comments. There's some confusion, and maybe Mike can clarify it. I think the setback from Mahaska is in question, and in one place it's at 100 feet, and in one place it's at 110 feet.
The subject property is located at the northeast corner of East 38th Street and East University Avenue. This is the existing storage unit facility. This is an area where there was grading done on the property without permit, which we are attempting to resolve. If the rezoning is approved, we basically stay at enforcement on that grading permit until, so they could grade the site once for redevelopment. If the zoning is not approved, we would still go after the property owner for remediation of that prior grading. Previously, the applicant requested to rezone the entire property north to Mahaska. The Plan and Zoning Commission had recommended denial of that. When it came to the council for public hearing, the applicant proposed to reduce the amount of area being rezoned, leaving the north 100 feet of the property zoned R160. The council referred that back to the Planning Commission for rehearing. The commission did hold a hearing on that, and at that hearing, the neighborhood and other representatives requested a 110-foot setback from Mahaska. The Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend unanimously approval of the rezoning with a 110-foot setback from Mahaska. When we noticed the public hearing for council, it still said 100 feet in the rezoning, because we had not received a signed letter of zoning acceptance from the applicant at that time. So, in the meantime, last week, we did receive a signed letter agreeing to all of the conditions that the Planning Commission had recommended, which addressed the comments or requests for conditions from neighbors that were present at the Planning Commission.
And I did talk as Mr. DeWitt today, and also some of the representatives from the Greyswoods, and each of them have made concessions to try to move this forward, and he's willing to accept those, and, you know, under the considerations, and I would move this item, and he's aware of all the stipulations that are tied to it.
And we would revise the ordinance on second reading to reflect that it's excluding the north 110 feet from rezoning.
Yeah, I think 110 foot, and then with a four-foot wall, that for holding back the air, so...
That is correct. All of the conditions that the Planning Commission had recommended.
Mike, just for clarification, you started by saying the subject property is northeast corner of East 38th University. It's actually the southeast corner of East 38th, Mahaska, correct?
The rezoning boundary...
We're not considering the property on University, we're considering what's on Mahaska.
Well, the actual, it's in between the two, because the rezoning area is right here in the crosshairs. So, it does not abut Mahaska, and it does not abut University.
But if you look up the individual property addresses, they are Mahaska.
Correct.
And it is 110-foot setback from Mahaska. So, it's remaining that and R160 at that...
Yeah, 110 feet back, so just a little bit past the line that's shown on this map, would be left zoned R160. The remainder would be rezoned to a limited C2.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wally Pelts, Pelts Engineering, 2323 Dixon Street. I am the engineer for this project. We have gone back and forth with the help of Mr. Moore and Mr. Mahaffey with the neighborhood. I believe we've come to a good compromise. The 110 feet works. We are willing to also work through the rest of the process with the city. This is our first reading, and that is a, the signature came late. Again, I will take the blame for that, because I was working out my engineering detail to make sure that we could make it work. So, if you would have any questions on this process, I'd be happy to answer them for you at this time.
Anybody have any questions? Just for the heck of it, is there any reason why we wouldn't just go ahead and waive the other two readings?
Yeah, there is.
They need to change the wording of this to 110 feet. Right now, we're voting on 100 feet, and when they come back in two weeks. The other issue is that they've got to bring their plan forward to see if they qualify for tax abatement or not.
Is that part of what's in there? Has been agreed on?
No, the tax abatement is not part of it at this point, but we're in no, how would I say, expeditious. We're trying to work out the details with city staff as to what tax abatement options we have. So, typically, I'm asking you and begging you to push second and third readings, but not today, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I would ask if there's other people that are going to speak on this. We would all come up now, rather than waiting for call after call. So, we have, this is the last speaker? Have another one? Anyone else? We have two speakers. All right, thank you.
Mayor, County, Councilmembers, good evening. My name is Karen Schupman, 3804 Indianapolis Avenue, and the Greyswoods Neighborhood Organization is in agreement with P&amp;Z recommendations. We know this has been going on for almost a year now, and I have some comments from people who were unable to attend this evening, and I would like to have those on the record for this evening.
I'll move to receive and file them.
And... And that's all I have to say.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Susie Anderson. Our property is just east of the storage sheds, and I didn't That's been pretty much, it's in our lot, it's Mr. DeWitt's lot. Been that way since 2004, and there used to be a whole lot of trees there and everything. There's nothing there much. And this was kind of funny, I'm gonna show you that. That's what his lot kinda looks like in two years ago. And there's the vulture and the, I told Bob, we just need to go and get some fake plants, and we can pretend like we're in Arizona. So, that's just all I wanted to do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Bob, did you have a motion?
Yes, I guess I was premature with my first motion, but I'll move it this, that we approve this tonight. And then for the second, third reading, I'll come back to us with corrected distances.
Item forty-two, on a request from Baker Real Estate LP to amend the Baker PUD at 4,500 Hubbell Avenue to revise the development on parcels B and C to increase the number of permitted multifamily units from 180 to 210, and to remove the required brick exterior materials, replacing them with a cement board material.
Mr. Mayor, William Lilis and Joel Templeman appearing on behalf of Baker, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. With us is Pierce Cody. And as the item reads, the request of the Baker PUD on Hubbell has to do with our submittal to IFA, the numbers of units, although there's not a different configuration, there are more units because of the elimination of some of the three-bedroom units to two-bedroom units, but they're exactly the same in size. Planning and zoning and staff had no difference with us on that. We, the second part of the item is to remove the required brick exterior materials, replacing them with cement board materials. Pierce Cody from Simonsen and Associates is here with us this evening. In short, we had a way to provide for what looks like brick. It's a hardy plank that is stamped brick, and so we complied with what the staff wanted as far as the exterior. So, we have a brick product, i.e. a hardy plank, which I guess is cement. We're all becoming better versed on brick, but this is a different way to look at brick. So, the long story short is Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously. Pierce Cody's here to answer questions from Simonsen, as is Mike Nelson from the Baker Group. We'd urge your approval. This is part of an IFA project, and so we think we have a product that will be not only hardy, no pun intended, but it will also appear to be brick. We have a sample if you need it.
On this particular item now, is this project gonna go forward even if they're not successful with the tax credits?
Most likely not. We were, we were, this project was before the IFA Board, before. We've come back and we've resubmitted under IFA. As the mayor knows, I think staff knows, the IFA requirements are much, much more stringent. So, we have, we're trying again, and we are trying for more units, although the buildings are the same size and the same configuration. But I would say very difficult, if not impossible, without the IFA approval, which I think is coming up. I should know, Mike, when is IFA, a couple of weeks, I believe. So, welcome your questions. Pierce is here from Simonsen, and since the council knows a lot about brick, we have a sample. Why not just show it to you, so?
Bill, are there any other buildings in Des Moines that has this application?
Yes, there is. The Hubbell Project at Drake, the building that's on the west side of 31st Street, which is a, the same product, and it's, Pierce, I'm taking some architectural license here. And so, it looks like brick. It's come some panels. It's hardy plank stamped brick, I believe, isn't it? Is that right? Pierce, you'll have to introduce yourself.
And do you know how long that panel's been on those buildings?
Well, it's the brick, it's the Hubbell Commons is what I call it. It's on the west side of 30th Street. It's the-
About three years?
Probably three or four years.
Is it three or four years?
Yeah, I would say four, maybe not even going up five, but it's in that range, certainly.
That's good.
Name's Pierce Cody. Work with Simonsen and Associates, 1717 Ingersoll. As Bill has alluded to, IFA's requirements change every year. Last year, they allowed three-bedroom units. This year, they don't. That's driven that change. This year, one of the other changes they've made is the allowable cost per unit, which has gone down dramatically this year. And so, where last year, we had the budget and wherewithal to do a full-depth brick, this year, it's a much, much more difficult struggle for us to do. And so, we think that this material, which is very analogous to a hardy board siding made by a different company, but same technology, would give us the appearance of brick, the durability that we're looking for and that IFA requires in our projects, and would then allow us to hopefully meet the requirements of all the various incentive parties. So, be happy to answer any questions about the material if you have any more.
How big a sheet does it go up here?
It actually goes up, almost like a siding panel. I believe they're a two-foot tall panel, or they come in different heights depending on what module you want. And then I think they're 10 or 12 feet long. And actually, if you look closely at that Hubbell building, there are several different of these panels on there. Some look like brick, some look like stone, some look like stucco. So, it's a fairly malleable product in that regard.
How does the corner seams come together? Is there a special piece?
Yeah, there's actually a seaming process that you have to, to do to come around the corner. But in this case, to meet plan and zoning, we would bring this material up to the first floor of the three-story building, and then up our two major entries. And P&amp;Z was very satisfied with that compromise. Are there any further questions? I'll let Bill take back home.
If the council has any more questions, we'll be happy to answer them. If not, it's up to you. It's your approval.
Bill, I guess I have a question. As you know, we've debated bricks and half-bricks, and now we're looking at kind of pictures of bricks, pressed in concrete and a little paint on it. I think one of our thoughts, and I believe was a recommendation by staff, that we use bricks. And I'm somewhat hesitant to want to decide that we are now gonna change our view of bricks after a very extensive conversation about bricks for a number of weeks, and to decide that there's some kinds of projects we're gonna use them on and some kinds of projects we're not, especially after that lengthy discussion and education that we've received about bricks. So, I guess it's a cost issue or something that caused you to, to wanna do that, but convince us that it's in the best interest of the, of the project, the neighborhood, and the residents to change the quality of projects, you know, and we've had this discussion with IFA about these issues, and obviously, they didn't see it our, our way, but-
That's kind of our understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that it is cost-driven. Mike Nelson's here, and we have cost, or they've cost out what the difference in the materials would be. This is hardy plank is what I call it, as I understand it, stamped brick. It's a very, very durable product. And so, we had the difference with staff, where initially, this project was brick. Because of IFA's requirements, candidly, we've had to pull back on that. So, we were trying to find a compromise that would work, that would look like brick. It's still a hardy material, no pun intended, and we're told that it is. So, we looked for an example, and the, to all of us who are not architects, and even to the architects, we went to the Hubbell Project and, and used that as our example of how it can look and how durable of a material it can be. Pierce has done that research. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended that this be approved, and that in fact, we do the first floor, and then the columns and whatever, so it would dress up, so it would not look like, you know, a second-rate type of a, of a complex. It's cost-driven. If the requirements of true brick, whether it's full brick or half-brick, and I know the council's very, very conversant in that discussion, this would, the project most likely would fail. In fact, we just really, and IFA, we've been to, I think you have, Mr. Mayor, as I understand it, and some of the staff people and so forth, and IFA says it is what it is. We're trying to meet the requirements and to still have a nice-looking project. We did have a neighborhood meeting. There were a few neighbors that appeared, and we've had honestly support of our neighborhood at this, at this location. The location is a wonderful location, much in need of development, and so we hopefully urge your approval. But it is, long story short, cost-driven.
Any questions anybody has? Ms. Hensley?
Just a couple of thoughts and comments. Number one, I like the project, but I think there's a bigger issue there. I think that we, as a council, are gonna have to address with other projects in the same way. And there are two items. You know, we could continue the hearing to wait until we actually get notice based upon the comment that you said that the project would not go forward if the tax credits were not awarded. And there is a pending lawsuit that needs to be resolved before any of these tax credit projects will go forward. In fact, I think they had, it went to court today, and I don't know what the timeline is, but it could put all tax credit projects at a complete stop.
We're told that that lawsuit most likely will not delay the awarding of the credits. And so, we obviously don't wanna be caught in that, in that particular bind. So, but understood that that could happen independent of all of our requests.
Yep.
This is a technical request. It's a technical modification, and in order for us to comply with our IFA application, we do need to have the approval. And we're also, I wanna urge, I wanna mention to the council that we don't believe that the product we're proposing is, is a secondary type of a product. The warranty for the hardy plank, Pierce, what was it?
Well, the hardy board siding, the hardy board siding is a 30-year material, which is what we would be using on the upper two floors, both a horizontal siding and a shake-style siding. And then, the cementitious brick material carries a 40- or 50-year warranty.
And what's the length of the project? Is it set up for 40 years?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
But the, but the materials last 30?
Well, the-
That's the warranty.
That's the warranty, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anybody explain how this is gonna be applied to the side of the buildings?
Certainly. This material has much in common with a technology called a rain screen. It's basically a layer of this siding. Most siding is applied directly to an exterior sheathing on a building. This is actually held out away from the building on a series of clips and channels, so that every siding product, every even brick gets water penetrate through it in some place, some location. A rain screen allows that water to drain out of that wall, and by being held out away from the wall, it drains down the backside of the material as opposed to getting to the interface of the wall. So, this material would be applied on that clip system. The hardy board siding is screwed or nailed directly to the studs.
Is that the standard application? Is that the same way it was applied to the buildings out on 33rd?
The Hubbell Project on 31st, yes.
31st, okay.
Yes. That's manufacturer's requirement for that product.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to ask staff. Mr. Ludwig, could you comment about the original staff recommendation and your sense of quality of brick, half-brick, hardy plank, whatever it is, and what it means, the quality of a development in neighborhoods and all the above?
Mayor County, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. The elevations in front of you were what were submitted for review. Previously, the approved PUD elevations had brick in portions up two levels, and then the top was basically a cement board siding at that time. The applicant came in with a revision, and as it was stated, it was, it was due to funding with the Iowa Finance Authority Tax Credit Program. Originally, they came in with entirely just a cement board, which was, looked like a lap siding for all three levels of the building, and staff had expressed concern that we were losing that, that brick, substantial building material on the lower levels of the building. And so, they came back with a revision shortly after that that had differentiation in some of the colors that were used on the building, but still, it was a lap, lap siding, cement board siding. We met with them again to see what could be done as far as either getting full brick or thin brick on the exterior levels of the building, particularly, we were at a minimum hoping to get the first level of the three-story building at a minimum to have a brick finish. They went back and looked at various options and, and costed those out. And then, at the planning commission meeting, they came shortly before the camp, planning commission meeting, they notified staff that they were considering the, it's basically, one of the manufacturers is Nicheha, which is the product that they passed out to. They are correct. It has been used in a couple of applications. The, the Hubbell apartment project at Drake, kind of the stone-looking material is, is the, is this cement board panel. Also, the Starbucks on Fleury Drive utilized some of this building material on it. And we've also seen it applied in more of an industrial application. These are some storage units up in the Hubbell Business Park off of Hubbell Avenue and Northeast 54th, I believe. And so, these photos kinda show you what it, the appearance that it gives from a, from a distance, as well as somewhat, of course, I think the real difference when you, when you look at this material is if you go up and knock on it, it obviously doesn't have a solid feel like a brick would. But, from a, from a visible standpoint, I get, the staff didn't have a whole lot of time to review the request before it went to the Planning Commission. It kinda came up the day of. At the meeting, the Planning Commission held a hearing on that and reviewed the material, and, and I believe- And I believe they felt it was more important to have differentiation in the material types, not having the lap siding all the way down to the ground, and that this was a reasonable alternative to providing that differentiation in appearance on the building. So, staff ultimately, I guess, respects the planning commission's decision that they made.
Well, unless somebody has anything else, I think we ought to go ahead and close the hearing. And is there anyone else out in the audience who would like to speak to this? Looks like we have somebody.
Mayor, Council Members, Mike Nelson, Nelson Development, member of the Baker Group Development Project, 1425 Glen Oaks Drive, West Des Moines. The only couple of comments I'd make to that. Frame of reference for the Nicheha panel is on a project you're familiar with, E300, above the Zombie Burger. All the yellow paneling there is a Nicheha panel. And I guess, to keep it short, lastly, what I would say is, on behalf of the owners, in the event that the council or staff wanted to use a very thin brick in place of the Nicheha panel, we'd accept that as owners, as a substitute. But we feel like the Nicheha panel and the cement board is an equivalent product. We are, and I understand, I understand and respect the council's and the city's position as it relates to requiring brick. But we are in a difficult spot in that IFA has now restricted the cost allowed to spend on the projects. So, we are not a Hampton Inn. So, it's not just an investment criteria, it's a limitation on what you're able to spend, which is a complete 180 from what they required last year, which was they wanted, they wanted hard surfaces, which this would actually comply per last year. So, it's a 180 with a curve ball. In addition to that, I think, you know, I would ask the council's judgment as it relates to products and buildings that, and as you know, we own many, that are within the central business district where you have adjacent buildings that are red brick and that are substantially masonry materials. And you sit in Mahaffey's District on Hubble, and although it is within the enterprise zone district, it is a far cry from, say, Sixon Walnut or Sixon Grand. I think what we've proposed and planning has agreed is our variation in materials is a great project for the street and will be as nice as anything else that is out there. But I would add that if council requires that we address a thin brick as a substitute to the, where we've shown the Nicheha panel press material, we'd be willing to meet the council and the city halfway in order to move our project forward because we are at a point now where we have a very limited time in order to respond to IFA, in order to have a chance to receive the credits. So, we're now technically at a point where we have to respond or we get eliminated altogether. So, even though they have their own issues, that's what we're faced with.
Mike, did I understand you to say that on the 4th and, East 4th and Grand, that this panel has been used on part of that building?
Right. If you look at the, I'll call it the mustard color accents parts of E300, of E300 Grand, the seven-story apartment building. And that's where we found it to have great use and flexibility, so that's why we suggested...
That's above grade, Mike?
Pardon me?
Above grade?
Correct.
It's a good-looking building. Yeah, I know you're part of it, yeah.
But what do you have on grade? Is it half-brick or full brick, or what is...
At E300 Grand, we use brick.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then let's go ahead. Mike, I appreciate your comments as well as everyone that has spoken to this. We have this ongoing discussion about bricks. We're getting very educated. We're going to be expert witnesses here soon. But I think that we have some decisions to make, and Bob, I look to you as, you know, the award council person to give us a sense. I would rather see the, at least on the, that per story, the personally, the better product, or at least what I perceive to be the better product, Mike. And, but Bob, I will defer to you, but I think this goes back to our earlier discussion on what we're going to do moving forward about codes and where we use certain products and where we substitute and are going to use something else.
Well, I think we have two issues here. One is the IFA requirements, and you know what they will support and what they won't. I know we went through this with the hotel. We spent a lot of time on brick and that. But I also noticed that the buildings that they mentioned it's been used on, I think that they're good-looking buildings, and some of them's been there, what, three to five years? And so, I've kind of got mixed emotions. I understand also the thin brick issue. I think it may be more durable, in my opinion, but I'm not someone who is a specialist in that area. So, I guess I have no concerns that this wouldn't be a nice project with the siding that they're proposing. So, I'm willing to go along with this. I think that we've granted it out on, in the Drake University area, that I can still support it on the east side as well as being used out there. So, that would be my opinion.
So, you have a motion to move...
Yes. I would move this project forward with the materials that they proposed.
All right. Make your application. Good luck, guys.
This has been a project that's been going on now for, what, three or four years? I don't remember when we first started this, but I, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Item 43 on the vacation conveyance of a segment of Linden Street west of 14th Street to Wellmark Holdings, Inc. in exchange for a permanent easement for the street right-of-way connecting the east terminus of the remaining Linden Street to Ingersoll Avenue and to continue to April 9th at 5:00 PM. So, the motion really is to continue.
I'll move item 43 to continue the hearing to April 9th.
All right. Anyone here to speak on it? Seeing none, we've got a motion.
Seven yes.
Item 44, in the conveyance of a portion of vacated north-south alley right-of-way north of Scott Avenue between Southeast 6th and Southeast 7th Streets adjoining 506 Southeast 7th Street to Jean M. Ware and Bess M. Sandberg in exchange for an access rights deed required for the Southeast Connector Project. Anyone here to speak on this item?
I'll move 44.
Items moved?
Seven yes.
Item 45, in the conveyance of various rights-of-way and easements to the state of Iowa and the city of Norwalk for portions of Highway 5, Highway 28, and a segment of Echo Valley Drive located near the Des Moines International Airport. Anyone here to speak on this item?
I'll move 45.
45 is moved.
Seven yes.
Item 46, on granting of a license to the Greater Des Moines Public Art Foundation for the installation, display, and maintenance of five sculptures at the HubSpot, Council Communication Number 12-132. Anyone here to speak on this item?
I'll move item 46. This will be a great addition down on the Riverwalk, Principal Riverwalk.
Does it really add to the attraction down there?
Yeah, it will.
Seven yes.
Right. Let's notice that the hearings are completed at 6:12. Takes us back now to item 35, which is a communication report. Claudia Addy and Dr. Sue Savage-Rumbaugh to speak regarding the Bonobo Hope Sanctuary/Great Ape Trust.
I'm Dr. Claudia Addy, a volunteer with the Bonobo Hope Sanctuary. Address is 4200 Southeast 44th, Des Moines, 50320. We thought that you might be interested in a brief update into the progress that we are making as a new entity. Under the tutelage of our new director, Sue Savage-Rumbaugh, we are making good progress since December. We are in our first year of fundraising, but we are not solely relying on fundraising. And on a regular basis, we are decreasing operating costs while maintaining and improving the quality of the facility and the experience for all concerned, the apes, visitors, as well as staff. On the fundraising side, we are hopeful that by coming before you tonight, if there are opportunities that we may have overlooked, or opportunities that you might expedite for us, if you could possibly make us aware of the same. We are currently in the works. We have a national, international fundraising campaign, a mailing campaign. We do have some restaurant fundraisers in the works in Beaverdale and another one in another area, but I'm not sure where that is. We're looking at grants, and we currently will be, we're working on a big grant from Walmart this month. We're hoping for a very good local response to our efforts, and we would like to tie in to the shop local, dine local, see the local attractions someday, possibly, such as the zoo. You know, we could tie in the zoo, the Bonobo Hope Sanctuary, the Civic Center, the Des Moines Playhouse, all into the shop local, dine local, do it locally. Des Moines is building a lovely, vibrant downtown with hotels and bike rentals and restaurants, of course, the car services. And we would like to establish more visibility within our community. We would like you all to keep us on your radar as a great Des Moines destination site. As an example of our national draw, within the past couple of weeks, we have had colleagues visit Des Moines and the sanctuary from Canada, several from, four from Canada, some from New York City, California, Burlington, Iowa, Chicago, Amsterdam, and Israel. All of these colleagues come to our city and, of course, utilize the things that we have to offer, the airport, the hotels. And hotels are not a destination, but our sanctuary, we consider it a wonderful destination. Additionally, we have hosted a number of local groups for educational tours, such as the Ray Society, and we have hosted three meetings on behalf of the Ray Society. And we have others in the works. Our focus in the future will be on education, and we will, we are in the process of applying for a license and exhibitor's license. We're also beginning discussions with RDG, an architectural group, for walking trails and a similar sculpture park, and to develop the beauty and naturalistic setting for Bonobo life and human enjoyment. And this is our new logo, pogo, and I brought you a pamphlet and left them on your desk. So, thank you very much.
Now, is this open to the public yet?
We, this is why I said we are developing, we're in the process of applying for a visitor's license. And we're open to the public in the sense that if you make...
An appointment.
Make an appointment, yeah. And let it be known that you would like to visit and have an interest in an educational opportunity. Would you like to add anything, Dr. Rumbaugh?
Please.
I would like to thank you for allowing Dr. Addy to come speak. I didn't ask Dr. Addy to come speak. The volunteers that have come out there since we've opened the center have opened it up so people can interact a bit more with the apes have become highly dedicated, and it's a great inspiration to me that they have and that they want this to remain in Des Moines. We hope to. If we can't, we will have to relocate the apes, but we hope to remain in Des Moines. One of the main reasons that we're moving from a research institute to a sanctuary is because the work that has been done with these apes, which really began in 1972 with Lana, the first chimpanzee to demonstrate language. The consistency of that work, along with discoveries in genetics, and along with Jane Goodall's discoveries of what apes do in Africa, has changed the ethic in the country. And in December, the federal government ruled that no proposals using chimpanzees or Bonobos can be submitted to the federal government for funding. Now, although we haven't done biomedical invasive research, and although this is generally aimed at them, it really affects all apes in captivity. And it will mean that many apes that are now in biomedical institutions will also come into sanctuaries. So, there's a general growing recognition. And the person who was much behind this, who started animal law in the American Bar, visited yesterday and has written several papers crediting the work that has been done with these apes for this change. Because while you might see that they're a bit like us when you watch Jane Goodall, and you might feel a bit badly that the genetic relationship is as close as they are, when you see their intelligence and how their intelligence can manifest if given a chance, that's what has given people pause. So, these apes deserve a kind of a sanctuary for the rest of their life, and they deserve to be in a place where people can be educated and understand what it is that's happened and the major change that's come about. So, we would like to develop a natural environment there where they can walk around safely around trails, and people can walk and maybe glimpse them in the forest. And we envision interactive sculptures where a sculpture, you can climb on it and it moves and interacts, and humans can do this with a sculptor on one side and apes could do it with another, so you see how you physically interact with space in different ways. So, these are our hopes and plans. If they don't take place here, we will hope they will take place somewhere else. But we look for a kind and peaceful future between the species. Thank you.
Dr. Rumbaugh, I thank you for coming here and, quite frankly, dedicating your life not only to the work with the apes, but for those of you that don't know, she is recognized as one of the 100 most influential people in the world. So, we thank you for being a part of Des Moines and being here, and hope you and do stay, and wish you great success with this. I hope that, you know, our city departments, we can see how we can possibly work with you. I know that there's some issues with our work with the Corps of Engineers that may have some effect on some portions of the area down there, but I'm sure we're going to try to work with you as best we can to see if we can't help you realize your dream in whatever ways that we can. But let's give Dr. Rumbaugh a hand.
Let me just say that Time Magazine couldn't recognize Kanzi as one of the most 100 influential apes in the world, so they took me as the second-best. But at some point, Kanzi and Kanzi's culture that he has learned will continue across generations, and it will influence the world. So, it's not really me... So it's not really me that I'm looking to display out there. It's really, it's really the apes and what's been learned from them.
Well, and I know you're not, but it's humble people like you that move it forward. So thank you for your continued work.
So if I have just another second, if you guys, if you have any ideas for fundraising, please let us know. Feel free to call me at my home. I'm in the phone book, but I'll give you my phone number now, two five five three seven eight zero. And that's one easy way. And if you want me to detail a little more of anything, you know, I can never overrule what Dr. Rumbaugh does, but we really want to keep the facility here. And I was hoping to impress upon you that our colleagues and folks coming, we're using the things that we're trying to promote, the airport, the hotels, those kinds of things.
Doctor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Could we have a motion received and filed?
I'll move the receiving file, the information.
All right. Let's move to item forty-eight, which is an extension of a, approving an extension of a twenty-eight E agreement with Neighborhood Finance Corporation, NFC, for the period of June thirty, two thousand and twelve, to June thirty, two thousand and seventeen, one million dollars annually for five years, Council Communication number twelve dash one forty-five.
I have the opportunity to represent the city of Des Moines on this board, and I know we've got some individuals out in the audience, Holly Olson, the executive director, Jenny Cooper is our president of our board, and Quint Boykin. I mean, Holly has been the executive director for how many years?
Six.
Six years. Jenny's on her second term. She's gone through all of the offices, and she's serving as president the second time. And Quint, what can we say about Quint? He has been there from the very beginning and has just done a great job in helping us stay our course. It's a great board. They do great things in the community. And I will just share with the council, the, also the partnership that they have with Neighborhood Works as a result of what they've been able to do is absolutely outstanding. When I was in DC last week, you can see the high regard that the National Neighborhood Works has for Neighborhood Finance Corp. And they should. They're their leading affiliate. I mean, they've set the standard throughout the country, so. I'll go ahead and move item forty-nine, and a big thank you for all the work and effort and what you've done at Neighborhood Finance.
Thank you all.
Seven yes.
All right. Moves us on item forty-nine, which is a five-year renewal of a twenty-eight E agreement with Neighborhood Development Corporation for the use in a variety of redevelopment programs within low and moderate income neighborhoods, one million dollars annually for five years, Council Communication number twelve dash one forty-six. Anyone here to speak to this? Motion? Anybody? All right. Then move.
I'll move forty-nine. You're doing a great job, too, Heidi. I just did one.
Hey, thanks. And I wanted to streamline the rest of your reading.
Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I serve on the board, and it is, is very, very good. And Heidi does preach.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes.
All right. Thank you for your speech, Heidi. Okay. Item fifty, authorization to make funds available in the amount of one million dollars from the park and ride account for DART's Bus Rapid Transit, BRT, project, Council Communication number twelve dash one forty-four. We had a presentation this morning at our workshop, and the manager, as a result of that and work that they have done, is recommending that we move dollars from the park and ride account for that project. Mr. Manager, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I think you said it very well, and we talked about it this morning. This is a million-dollar commitment out of our park and ride revenues. Those are revenues that must be used by federal statute for a transit purpose. This is a transit purpose. Unfortunately, we can't use those dollars for other things, so this is an appropriate use for it. The local match for the project, if you recall the discussion this morning, is five million dollars. This is a commitment from the city for twenty percent of that, or one million. It leaves the balance to be raised by DART as they put their application together. But this is a significant would-be, if the council approves it, significant contribution towards this project. I recommend it to you. I think it's a good project. Obviously, they have to go through the whole application process and have it approved by the federal government, but hopefully the application will be successful.
I could just add, and maybe Bob, if you wanted to add to this, but we did have a meeting this afternoon, just, or at lunch, and discussing the new routes, and that will be approved tomorrow night, I anticipate, by the DART board, which is really exciting to see all of those routes. But we also had the opportunity to discuss some of the fundraising and where we are at. And one that was noticeably absent this morning, as we discussed potential fundraising, was the county. And in talking with Angela, she's indicated that the county is looking at this, and we don't have any final answer yet, but they've indicated that they are looking at it.
I really don't have any more to add. I just think that as we continue to work on this regional DART program, and we went through all the various routes and the changes, and that is going to happen in June and November, I'm very impressed with what's been accomplished and what we're going to be able to offer our city and the surrounding cities that we are not offering today. So I really think it's something we need as a community involvement in a regional program for our city.
I agree.
I want to tell both of you, I think that we're all in support of certainly the, this project. You're going to have a meeting tomorrow to discuss the rerouting?
It's the board, it's the commission.
It's a board, regular board meeting, yeah, for final approval, yeah. They were trying to present their, the programs to us today, so we have a good feel for what's happening.
Is there, the, I understand we're discontinuing the Franklin Avenue bus route?
That was one. They, I can't re, they went through so many different...
Yeah, they went through so many of them, but a lot of them have been discontinued. They're rerouting some of the other ones to pick up that, what they've lost in some areas. I thought about everything was going to be accomplished, except there's some routes on the east side that were, they're going to have to drop some area on the east side.
We had discussion that I thought was very informative. They had close to three hundred people, I think it was three hundred and twenty-four people that showed up at the public forums, and about ninety-five percent of the comments and concerns that were expressed have been addressed with route changes, or they might have to walk a block or two further. But there are very few that were not able to be addressed because of the other routes. And I can't remember for sure, Mayor, but we can get that information.
Well, the question that I had just considering, and we have a new senior center up there that was constructed not long ago, and obviously the opening of the new Franklin Library, which one would think that there are some folks that would access those by bus, and also that in the, I wondered if there was any impact on the lead platinum application with the discontinuation of that bus route.
Oh, under Franklin Library?
Right.
I don't know, but we can find out.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Yeah. We must have went over thirty, forty routes today, and I certainly can't remember.
I don't remember the Franklin being discussed, but Urmandale Avenue now was discussed.
Okay. Well, just if you check in to it, I have some interest on that one.
And from my two cents, I would just say that Elizabeth has been very responsive. Everything I forwarded to her, she's responded and met people's concerns, so.
All right. Do we have a motion on fifty? Bob, did you want to move fifty?
Yes, I'll move fif, oh, yes, that's the one. I thought Christine had moved it. If not, I'll move it, yeah.
Seven yes.
All right. Item fifty-one, approving the memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT, for the functional replacement of the Parks, of Park Service Center and the Public Works Yard, Council Communication number twelve dash one thirty-one. Mr. Manager, did you want to give a quick?
Mayor and council, this is a, an agreement that allocates five million dollars to the city of federal transportation dollars to essentially assist in the replacement of the Park Center and Public Works Yard that are being relocated as a result of the Southeast Connector project. It's been a lot of work on the part of Jeb and his staff and others in the organization, so we do recommend it to you. And it does relate then to item fifty-one A, which is the next item.
All right. And A is approving the professional services agreement with Newman-Monson Architects for Design and Construction Phase Services for the Municipal Services Center Phase One, not to exceed one million ninety-eight thousand dollars, Council Communication number twelve dash one thirty-four. Any discussion on that item?
This is, this is the design work for only Phase One?
Yes.
As a percentage of Phase One budget, how much is this contract?
I'd have to turn to Mr. Brewer. I think he can answer.
Mayor members of council, Jeb Brewer, city engineer. Typically, if you want to look at a percentage of design fees, we would look at the construction cost. The overall project cost has a lot of property acquisition. If you remember, we've just recently purchased Carroll Automotive, and there's a, some environmental work and some things that are associated with that site. And that cost is divided between MSC site and the Southeast Connector. But essentially, the construction for the building is going to be eleven million dollars. But in addition to that, there's also quite a bit of site work associated with that that's part of this design fee. And in addition, there's quite a bit of work associated with the FFNE, the furniture, the shelving, since this is an industrial type of facility, those are very important part of the building to make sure that you can put your equipment and your materials in a safe and efficient manner, and then also specialized equipment. So you turn that up, you're over twelve million dollars. So, you know, it's less than ten percent of the total price, which is a reasonable fee. We did have some negotiations with the consultant and got the fee more in line, which what we thought was reasonable.
Good work.
Jeb, thank you for your work on this, and I am presuming that all of our work is keeping in mind that we want to make sure everything's above that five-hundred-year flood standard, right?
There's an element in here to make sure that when the building is constructed, that it makes use of any kind of flood hardening, to make sure the building is capable of withstanding any kind of future events that we can foresee as far as flooding or other weather events to make the facility as operational as possible, considering the site that we have.
All right. I think it's been moved. Ryan, did you move it?
Yes, fifteen-one.
Seven yes.
All right. Unless anybody has anything else, could we have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you very much.